And we are going to record. There we are, Madam Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. All right, well, good evening, everyone, and I'm Mayor Val Van Der Brook, and I'd like to call the July 26, 2021 public hearing to order and begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Kaitse Quatlin, Masque, and Semiamu First Nations. And with me tonight, I have Counselor Paul Albrecht, Counselor Terry James, Counselor Gia Martin, Counselor Nathan Bahal, Counselor Rudy Stortebum, and Counselor Rosemary Wallace. And for staff, we have Frances Chung, our Chief Administrative Officer, Erin Light, our Director of Corporate Services, Carl Johansson, our Director of Development Services, Rick Baumhoff, our Director of Engineering, Parks, and Environment, Kim Hilton, our Director of Recreation, Culture, and Community Services, and Paula Kuzak, our Deputy Corporate Officer. So I will call to order this public hearing. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act in order to consider four bylaws. Bylaw number 3174, Official Community Plan Amendment Number 15, a bylaw to amend City of Langley Official Community Plan Bylaw in order to incorporate provisions for higher-density, low-rise residential uses at the properties addressed 20040 to 2007053A Avenue and 20041 to 2007153 Avenue. Bylaw 3175, zoning amendment number 177, and development permit number DP 04-21 is a bylaw to rezone the properties located at 2004 to 2007053A Avenue and 20041 to 2007153 Avenue from RS1 Single Family Residential Zone to CD76 Comprehensive Development Zone to accommodate a six-story, 113-unit apartment development. Bylaw 3177, Official Community Plan Bylaw Amendment Number 16, a bylaw to amend City of Langley Official Community Plan Bylaw in order to incorporate provisions for higher-density mixed-use development and amend the land use designation of the properties addressed 20137 and 20139 Fraser Highway from the current designation of service commercial to transit-oriented core. And bylaw 3178, zoning bylaw amendment number 178 and development permit number DP 07-21, a bylaw to rezone the properties located at 20137 and 20139 Fraser Highway from the C2 Service Commercial Zone to the C1 Downtown Commercial Zone to accommodate a six-story, 144-unit apartment and 841 square meter commercial mixed-use development. I'd like to thank everyone for attending this public hearing, which is taking place via Zoom. If we encounter technical challenges during the meeting, please stand by, and as we want to ensure, everyone who wishes to speak is afforded the opportunity to do so. This public hearing is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and is also being recorded and will be posted on the city's website. If you are watching and wish to join or attend this electronic meeting, you can by going to www.langleycity.ca to register and join the meeting. At this public hearing, those in attendance at this meeting who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw will be allowed to make presentations, representations to council, and shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained in the bylaw. Once in the meeting, you may use the raise hand function to indicate your wish to speak, which will automatically put you in the speaker queue. You will be invited to speak in the order of which hands are raised. When it is your turn to speak, staff will prompt you with a message asking you to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Please commence your comments to council by clearly stating your name and street address. Unit numbers are not required. Then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the bylaw. Your name, address, and comments will form part of the record of this public hearing. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members this evening is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens. Once you have completed your comments, staff will mute your microphone. Everybody shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be, or should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. I'm asking that you keep your comments to no more than five minutes to allow everyone who wishes to speak an opportunity to do so. Once everyone who wishes to speak has done so, I will call for speakers for a second time, at which those who wish to speak again should indicate so by using the raise hand function. I will then call for speakers for a third and final time. If there are no speakers, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing. The public was also given the opportunity to provide written submissions for this public hearing. All submissions will be retained by the corporate officer, and copies of the submissions will be available from her on request following the hearing and shall form part of the public record of these proceedings. Ms. Kuzak, can you please advise how notification was provided for this public hearing and whether we have received any correspondence?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two newspaper advertisements were placed for all of the bylaws in the July 15th and 22nd additions of the Langley Times, and notices were mailed out to owners within 100 meters of the subject properties. Notice of the public hearing was also placed on the city's website and on the posting board on the first floor of City Hall. The city has received the following correspondence: three pieces for bylaw 3174, two pieces for bylaw 3175, two pieces for bylaw 3177, and no correspondence was received for bylaw 3178.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, and on to business. Bylaw number 3174, Official Community Plan Amendment Number 15. And I believe Mr. Johansson, you'll provide a brief overview of the purpose of bylaw 3174.
Yes, thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council. This proposed application requires an official community plan or OCP amendment along with a rezoning and development permit application as the proposed density in terms of units is higher than what's permitted in the current OCP. The proposed new OCP land use for this application is low-rise residential, which is consistent with what is being proposed and is contained in the new OCP. Low-rise residential land use envisions maximum density of 2.1 floor area ratio, or FAR, for apartment buildings and a maximum building height of up to six stories. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Johansson. Ms. Kuzak, can you please advise if there's anyone in attendance electronically at this meeting who wishes to speak to bylaw 3174?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one member of the public in attendance that is not indicating that he or she wishes to speak at this time.
Okay, so I'll call for a second time for speakers on bylaw 3174.
No change.
Okay, I'll call for a third and final time for speakers on bylaw 3174.
No change.
Okay, and seeing no speakers, do any members of council have any questions regarding bylaw 3174? Seeing none, I will move on then. So we are moving on to number P, bylaw 3175, amendment number 177, RZ-03-21, and development permit number DP 0421. Mr. Johansson, please provide an overview of the purpose of bylaw 3175.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this rezoning and development permit application involves a six-story, 113-unit apartment building, and where the applicant has agreed to provide a dedication on the east side of the proposed building to provide half the width of an eventual eight-meter-wide pedestrian and cycle-accessible greenway connection between 53A Avenue and 53 Avenue. And this will help to improve the walkability of the neighborhood if the application is approved and as the neighborhood redevelops over time. The proposal was well-received by the Advisory Design Panel, and the applicant has incorporated the panel's recommendations into their drawings. And as part of this, there is increased landscaping on the site, and the applicant is seeking a minor visitor parking variance in order to accommodate that working out to a ratio of about 0.16 spaces per unit. And that is a little bit higher than what is being contemplated with the new zoning bylaw, 0.15 spaces per unit, and it's something that's supportable by staff. And I believe the applicant is in the audience tonight. Thank you.
Great, well, I will now ask the applicant to speak to the proposed bylaw.
Hi, let me just share my screen for a moment. Can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. My name is Elena, and I'm here with Eric Oxleitner, who is the architect on the project, as well as Jessica Tison of Cron, who is the landscape architect. So prior to the recommendation set out by the Advisory Design Panel, our 113-unit, six-story residential building was not requesting any parking variances, but in order to add more landscaping to the surface parking podium, we are now asking for a variance to the visitor parking stall count from the 23 required to 18 proposed. As you may know, a number of Keystone projects have populated this area of Langley. As you can see, the form and character of our new proposed project fits in quite well with the other developments in the area. Several bus routes are currently operating in the area and provide access to downtown Langley. The development is in near vicinity to a number of parks and outdoor amenities. Our site is directly across from Nico Meckel Elementary, 200 meters southeast of Brighton Park, 300 meters to Linwood Park, and 340 meters southwest of Michaud Park. As per our ADP recommendations, we have improved the privacy for the ground floor patios adjacent to building entrances and the parcade ramp by providing adequate landscape buffer and at times reworking the patio layouts. Additionally, we've worked with our landscape architect eliminating any narrow areas which would be difficult to maintain. Our original submission proposed two EV charge stalls, which we have now raised to a proposed stall count of four as per the ADP recommendation. As per discussions with the city, the draft OCP states that visitor parking be calculated using a factor of 0.15 rather than 0.2. With preapproval from the city, we have proposed a variance to the visitor parking stall count from the required 23 down to a total of 18 stalls. The surface parking area has been revised using the extra space provided by the loss of five stalls, allowing for more green space along the west property line of the parking podium. Landscape-wise, we have allowed for a one-meter strip of grass and landscaping between the new east property line facing the greenway and a tiered landscape wall. The development is proposing 122 residence spaces below grade accessed by a ramp off of 53A Avenue and an additional 19 residence spaces located on the podium and secured area. As mentioned, 18 visitor stalls are also provided on the podium. In terms of security, the client will roughen CCTV, and if the building ends up being stratified, they will then have the option of implementing a system at that time. We have ensured that whenever a storage area is combined with a stack washer dryer, the space is actually usable for both functions. Additionally, we have now also provided outdoor balconies for the indoor amenity spaces located on the second floor facing the courtyard. These are just a few of our sections through the building on the podium. The siding and massing of the building is positioned along the street fitting in with the current neighborhood by means of a distinctive and prominent project projected entry, stepped facade, and flat raised projections at the corners in order to reduce scale. Both street front entries are defined and individualized from the remainder of the building form and character with a large C-shaped frame, which forms a strong canopy at the ground level and is further strengthened and warmed up by two wood column entry feature elements. Although the building sits on a half-story podium, the mass is reduced in scale by tiered landscape walls clad in brick. Permeability through the podium is created by wide entry stairs and ramps. The exterior is modestly articulated to bring in the old classical Beaux-Arts reference to its proportions, massing, and details. These are just a few of our rendered elevations showing a little more realistic view of the materiality. The exposed parcade portions along the street base are surface-treated with a warm brick veneer. The ground floor of the building is further strengthened by the use of brick, which above the first story acts as a base to a mix of textures created by the use of cementitious cladding, including board and batten, lap siding, and panel in white, black, and gray accents. A sense of warmth is further given to the project through the use of wood-colored sockets and trim. Opick frosted glass is being used for the privacy screen material in keeping with the modern vernacular of the project. The fencing material used around the secured resident parking area of the podium will be decorative aluminum, which will be painted black. Bullard lighting will be installed along the greenway to further improve the pedestrian experience. And now I would just like Jessica Tison of Cron to speak to the landscape design of the project.
Good evening. I think Elena has touched on the points already that we have revised since we met with the ADP, but I'll just run through them quickly. We've added some additional screening near the patios to enhance the privacy of those patios near the entrances. We have we have removed some narrow strips of grass to improve the maintenance of the site, and there has been some planting added in throughout the surface-level parking to enhance and soften that area and provide some shade to the parking area.
I think we are done our presentation. Thank you very much.
Great, well, thank you very much. Ms. Kuzak, can you please advise if there's anyone in attendance electronically at this meeting who wishes to speak to bylaw 3175?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are two people in attendance at the moment, neither of which are indicating they would like to speak at this time.
Okay, so I'll call for a second time for speakers on bylaw 3175.
No change.
I'll call a third time and final time for speakers on bylaw 3175.
No change.
Thank you. Seeing no speakers, do any members of council have any questions regarding bylaw 3175? Counselor Bahal, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And through the mayor to maybe the proponent. As far as the storage and washing, I know you said you adjusted it. I was just wondering, and it's just the drawings in my package are a little blurry. Did you actually do that in the sort of the unit drawings as well? Or will that be? I guess I'll just ask that, actually.
Yes, actually, the one unit that we did have to adjust was unit type C. So that one, we have rotated the washer dryer facing the door so you can actually get into the storage locker and use that space without obstructing the washer dryer. But the rest, we found, were functional.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for council? Seeing none, thank you very much. And we will move on to bylaw 3177, Official Community Plan Bylaw Amendment Number 16. And I believe Mr. Johansson, you're going to provide an overview of the purpose of the bylaw.
Yes, thank you and good evening once again, Mayor and Council. This OCP amendment application represents the second mixed-use redevelopment application in the Fraser Industrial District in the new OCP. An OCP amendment is necessary at this point as the current OCP designation in this area is service commercial. And the proposed new OCP land use for this bylaw is transit-oriented core, which is consistent with the new OCP in terms of involving mixed-use development and a transit-supported density of approximately three FAR or floor area ratio. This density and proposed redevelopment is well-suited as it's directly adjacent to the Fraser Highway corridor and within a five-to-10-minute walk of the future 203 Street Skytrain station. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. Kuzak, can you please advise if there's anyone in attendance electronically at this meeting who wishes to speak to bylaw 3177?
Madam Mayor, we still have two people in attendance, neither of which are indicating they would like to speak.
Okay, I will call for a second time for speakers on bylaw 3177.
No change.
I will call a third and final time for speakers on bylaw 3177.
Oh, we have a speaker, Madam Mayor. Mr. Feng?
Yes, hello. You mentioned that the buildings would be adjacent to the Fraser Highway corridor. I was wondering how close they would be.
Mr. Feng, can you please state your address as well, please?
My address?
Yes, please.
Um, yes, I can.
Not, you don't have to provide a unit number, but please provide your address so it become part of the public record, please.
212A Street.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
212A Street.
212A Street?
Yes.
Okay, and what is the address? I don't need a unit number, but please provide your address.
Uh, it is in Walnut Grove.
Okay, that's fine. Is your address, please, for the public record?
Uh, Walnut Grove.
That's efficient.
212A. I'm sorry, is there an issue?
Nope, we asked at the beginning of the public hearings that you provide your address for the public hearing for public record.
Oh, terribly sorry.
It's part of the process, that's fine.
Then I must have forgotten that part of the post, I'm very sorry.
Okay. Did someone want to answer the question? Or? Can you rephrase the question again, Mr. Feng?
Oh, um, yes, it's just that the council previously mentioned that the building would be adjacent to the Fraser Highway corridor. I was just wondering how close it would be, like the distance.
Go ahead, Mr. Johansson.
Sorry, I was just trying to unmute myself here for a minute. So it's Martin Vainoven from Keystone Architecture. So the distance from the highway is 7.76 meters on the Fraser Highway side, so that would be including, that's from the existing curb line. And there were some other road dedications involved in this, there were future bike lanes, et cetera, but that is the current setback on Fraser Highway.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for that response, Mr. Vainoven. Okay, I'll call for a third and final time for speakers on bylaw 3177.
And there are no speakers.
Okay, seeing no speakers, do any members of council have any questions regarding bylaw 3177? Seeing none, we will move on to the final bylaw, 3178, zoning bylaw amendment number 178 and development permit DP 07-21. Mr. Johansson, I believe you have an overview for the purpose of bylaw number 3178. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this zoning bylaw amendment to development permanent application, as you can see, proposes a six-story mixed-use building with about 9,000 square feet of commercial space, 144 apartment units, and a corner plaza at the intersection of Fraser Highway and 201A Street. This proposal aligns well with the new OCP and the land use that's proposed. It also includes parking variances that are consistent with those that are being contemplated in the new zoning bylaw for core locations with excellent transit service, including a reduced rate for one-bedroom and small-scale commercial, introducing shared residential visitor and commercial parking, and also looking at an updated small car percentage. That's consistent with what's found in municipalities, other municipalities with Skytrain. And the proposed parking approach is also supported by Professional Engineers Report, which the applicant can speak to further. And as the member of the public asked about the setbacks that are being proposed as part of the variances are consistent with what's being contemplated with the updated zoning for this type of development. Again, street fronting development, ground floor close to the curb relative to having it behind parking and the residential setback a little bit further to provide that light and air along those streets. The application received the support of the Advisory Design Panel, and the ADP's advice largely revolved around landscaping of public realm. And the applicant is seeking to create a plaza at the corner of 21A Street and Fraser Highway, and more detailed design of this element will be brought forward as a part of the civil works design stage and presented to council prior to adoption should the application receive third reading. And as council knows, we do have the applicant's team in the audience here, and they may wish to speak further to this. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Johansson. And to the, well, I will now invite the applicant to speak to the proposed bylaw, please.
All right, so that would be me, Martin Vainoven from Keystone. Good to see you all again. I'm going to share my screen. I make sure that we can see what's going on here. Is that working for everybody?
No, we're not seeing that yet.
Okay, so. Man, oh man, okay. Technical difficulties here.
It's okay, take your time. Let us know when you're ready. Totally understandable with Zoom.
Madam Mayor, it's Carl. I do have a copy of the applicant's presentation. We could share it and they can roll through it if they like.
Can you see that now or not?
No, sorry, it's not showing.
All right, well, maybe, Carl, if you can put that up, that would be great.
There we go, now we can see it. Thank you, Carl.
So this is a basically condensed version of the drawing, the full drawing package which has been submitted for the application. The cover page showing Cover page showing the plaza proposed for the corner of 201A and Fraser Highway. Fraser Highway being on the left side and 201A on the right side. And this reflects the landscaping that's been addressed by the ADP with which is kind of the direction that the planning department is trying to go with the Fraser Highway landscape plans, the strip of larger deciduous trees across the street fronts into our plaza area, which is at the confluence of what we feel will become a major pedestrian corridor with the advance of the Skytrain to this area. So here we see the location of the site. I guess I can't control anything here, can I, Carl, or what?
It is, it adds the slides, Martin.
Am I able to use my cursor on this, or is that not possible?
No, that's not possible.
Okay, so these are views of the current site. So this top left-hand corner, which is Fraser Highway at 201A, essentially similar to the view you just saw of the proposed plaza, which would be happening at this exact corner here. Below that, just a shot down Fraser Highway with the site on the left and the other side of the street on the right hand, and the 201A Street on the bottom left corner, we see a view coming up 201A. So this would be the view coming from the future train station that we're anticipating will increase the amount of pedestrian activity in this area. And the back lane side on the, on the rear, then we have the, the site is highlighted on the aerial view. It's apparently substantial. It has interesting trapezoidal shape to it, which generated the, a lot of the form of the building, particularly the street frontages. The detail sheet information, I'll just run through the variances that have been, that have been looked at for this particular project. I think you'll find there are a lot of similar ones to what you've heard already on, on other ones. So we have the resident parking stall calculations. This is all related to the upcoming changes to the OCP. So reduction in the number of stalls per, per bed. The small car percentage increase. We have a proposal for sharing visitor and commercial parking, which is all part of this all being highlighted by our parking study that's been done. And we have a few setbacks, encroachments into setbacks, which are relatively minor, primarily balconies. Some on the east side, which would be the 201A Street, some on the south and east around the main entrance with the canopies on the CRU level. Residential units at the corner, this would be on level two, just on the east side, which are very minor projections into setback areas. And some balconies and canopies on the east side again on different levels because we have the building stepping back basically from the street level to the commercial and then back from there again to the, to the residential above. So we have a couple of minor encroachments on those various levels. And then the storage lockers and bike storage, we have some doubling up of that type of space as part of the variance request as well. Okay, you want to go to the next one now, Carl? So views of the exterior, this is the, the primary visible elevation. So the Fraser Highway side, which would be the south perspective and also the west perspective is pretty much a straight on. We're highlighting the entry to the residential, which is where the rusted metal look comes down onto the street side. We have commercial defined by a brick podium, darker brick material. The glass is typically on retail, we're prefer to use a more of a vision glass without too much tint to it, but it's for some reason the rendering software doesn't like showing it that way. So it shows up fairly dark, but I think in reality that these, the glazing of the commercial will be fairly, fairly light and very transparent. On the throughway perspective, we're seeing again a view of the plaza that we spoke about originally, which was on the cover page. And with an intriguing structural system coming down to support the, this curved facade that's coming down all the way to the full height of the building at that, at that intersection. A simple color palette and form palette with the white and the brown and the big balcony is defined by the darker zones and the lighter areas defining the where the sweets are coming forward. Just to lighten it up, I find some of these areas, it's getting kind of grim and gloomy with a lot of the darker colors. So the the lightness of this, I think we feel is appropriate to the environment as well that it's in. Continuing on, Carl. This is the ground floor plan. We see the commercial masses here. There's two significant ones. The one is divided into two, the, the commercial along Fraser Highway would be divided into two parts by the residential entrance. Which has, shows a pair of elevators and there's an exit stair from parcade coming up into that same area. The other commercials area could be contiguous, but it's also there is a stair coming through there from above the exit stairs, but there is potential for that to be broken into smaller parts or a single CRU if that was appropriate. We have a lot of bike parking on the surface here. We have our, the plaza running through. There's some texture shown on here for what the the plaza might be doing. We have finer grain texture defined by, by a little bit heavier and there's some lighting elements shown, which would be cast into the, the ground level and those would be reflected up above as well in the, in the, in the softens. So there's a lot of, of light and a high visibility of activity in this corner. And that's carried on from both sides coming down the streets, either from 201A or, or Fraser Highway as well. And defined again by the, the streetscape and the landscaping that we have coming down there. The parking in the back is the gray is effectively the secure resident parking and the two colors of pink and purple are the shared parking. All of this, there's some separation and security provided by decorative fencing along the lane, which will extend down between the two different parking zones, one being the, for the secure parking and the other for the public. They're not intended to make everything 100% secure. It's just to, to give you some pause for thought and, and make it a little bit harder to get into the secured parking area. So we don't want it to look like a prison, but it does have to provide some comfort to the, the residents there. All the service spaces out in the, in the, what would be the northwest corner, we have pad mounted transformer, the parcade, underground parcade access, loading area and garbage and recycling exchange area. Garbage and recycling in effect is down the basement in the parcade level, and then it's brought up here for for staging and actually pickup and so on. Going on, Carl? So this would be the second level plan, which is fairly typical with the exception of the amenity areas which are shown here. So on this particular floor, we have two large indoor amenity areas. And they're connected to an outdoors, one outdoor amenity area, which they have attached to, and another amenity outside on the, on the west side. There's an other outdoor amenity space. So a lot of potential for shared use of these and indoor outdoor activities being conducted at the same time with a lot of potential for different uses to be accommodated there. All the furnishings and landscaping material that you see on these is pretty much movable. So the arrangement that you see could be, there's a thousand different ways to arrange these things and there's depending on what the activity might be, I think the residents would be, could be quite creative and in managing that, there's a little bit of definition of some private, there's a couple of private outdoor spaces associated with it. So those would be defined a little bit differently to protect the privacy of those residents. And this is basically typical floor for the next three, four, five and six. The underground parking shown here, we have the storage lockers and there's combination for bike storage. We have a fair number of small car tenant spaces and very free parking near the elevators. The garbage recycling up here in the northwest corner, so that taken up the ramp and staged up on the surface. Rendered exterior elevation. So you've sort of seen this already as a teaser from the earlier slide, but this is straight on view of the Fraser Highway would be the top southwest elevation. Signage proposal system for the commercial on the bottom, you see the, in the middle where the brown rust color is coming down, that's the entrance to the to the residential areas is fairly clear. And a fairly crisp palette for everything else happening here, clean, simple forms. There is some detail, it's hard to show on the scale of rendering, but there's a little bit of detail on the masonry surfacing around the commercial area, just to get the scale down to pedestrian as primarily our focus here is, is pedestrian, not vehicular. So that's kind of a change from what you'd be seeing now, which is Fraser Highway is pretty much entirely vehicular. So hopefully projects like this will, will start to steer that in another direction and with the help of the traffic coming from the Skytrain. It's should be quite an interesting future. This would be the backside northeast elevation, really the lane elevation. So in the middle, you see the open courtyard going through to the landscaped area on level two. But otherwise, the nature and character and quality of the other facades is carried around the back. So we we're not planning any lesser treatment of this side, even though it'll be for the time being probably lower profile than, than the street side, but nonetheless equally important. And of course, we anticipate further development in the area with the sort of increasing residential stock here. So the blank wall is really a firewall against the, the property line on the west. So the thinking would be that this, the next guy on the block would build up right against this and it would be generated a continuous facade on the Fraser Highway side. Color materials palette as mentioned, so we have a dark gray brick on the commercial level. And that's complemented by the, by the signage panel, which is, this would be a hardy panel. The glazing, which is better rendered on, in the larger scale here than it is on the actual rendering. You can see it's a fairly translucent, a very translucent, transparent and, and really not much of a tint to it. So that the visibility of the material in the retail spaces can be clearly displayed. We're proposing this rusted panel look, let's call it. I don't think it necessarily be a rusted panel, but there's certainly the look of that will be captured. And that'll be a feature component of the, of a lot of the exterior facades. The black aluminum is just limited to some of the detail elements, the guardrails and handrails and a few things like that. And then the white hardy would be the infills between the balcony zones. And that's about it. I think we don't have another slide, I don't think, to recall.
I think that's it.
Apparently not. That was it.
Well, thank you for that presentation. All right, Ms. Kuzak, can you please advise if there's anyone in attendance electronically at this meeting who wishes to speak to bylaw 3178?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We don't have any public in attendance.
Okay, I'll call for a second time for speakers on bylaw 3178.
No change.
I will call a third and final time for speakers on bylaw 3178.
No change.
Thank you. Seeing no speakers, do any members of council have any questions regarding bylaw 3178? Councilor Paul.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to sound like a broken record. For the shared storage space, have you resolved the usefulness of it for bike storage and washing?
Yes, you've done my, the similar comment to what we had in the earlier presentation. Yes, we have actually done that as well. And made some modifications to some of the units, which were really is more like a typo. We had shown some laundry equipment in ridiculous places. So that's all been rationalized now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your presentation, Martin. And I'm going to do a motion to close the public hearings. So may I have a mover and a secondary to close the public hearing? Councilor Stortabim, Councilor Wallace, all those in favor. Those that carries. So this public hearing is now closed. This bylaw will come forward for consideration of third reading at a future council meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.